Good evening and welcome to the January 20th, 2015 Gaithersburg Mayor and City Council Regular Meeting. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask one of our Martin Luther King Literary Awards Contest winners, Melanie Fernandez, to come lead us in the pledge. If everyone could please rise.
Yeah, Ben.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you. Next on our agenda is reflection. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Next on our agenda, we have appointments. There are two sets of appointments, the first being for the Animal Control Board.
Skip the consent agenda.
Oh, my fault. We have our consent agenda. There are two items on that. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, before I move to approve the consent agenda, I have a question. I've already talked to staff about this. We had an email conversation about this. One of the items is to repair and replace the roof at the Aquatic Center or at the water park.
Water park.
The water park. And one of the questions I had was whether or not we had considered using a solar array or solar panels on that roof since it's free of any shade. So I thought I'd ask staff to explain how they made that decision, whether that was involved in the process.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Mayor, the decision to install solar panels is driven by the economic viability of that particular exercise. So in the scoping process for this project, an analysis was done to see whether the return on the investment was worthwhile. It was determined that, given the usable space area, that it was not, the return on investment would be longer than we would like it to be. So it was an alternative that was not considered further. This is a process that we would follow now as we go forward for all our buildings. We do have a commitment to using renewable energy sources, but they must pass the economic test before we feel justified in spending public dollars to install them.
Great. So you anticipate, though, that we will be able to do that soon at one of our other facilities, or one that's actually close by to the water park?
Yes, we do. Actually, the gym for the Activity Center for the fiscal year '16 capital program is under consideration for this particular install. The gross area is large enough to make it an economically viable alternative for us to consider.
Great. So with that, I'll...
I actually had a couple other questions, if you don't mind, that I had emailed staff earlier today also, and while Michael's up here, might as well give him an opportunity. I thought it would be worthwhile to give staff an opportunity to explain the first consent item regarding the professional services contract for the Muddy Branch West Deer Park Stream Stabilization Project because the background material talked about the need to increase the value of the contract, but it didn't exactly clarify why. And I thought it would be useful for the public, for staff, to have an opportunity to just briefly explain why.
Sure. Councilman, thank you. For this particular project and for all our CIP projects, we had observed what was felt to be a sort of a systematic defect in our contracts in that when we retained professional staff to design the projects, we often didn't include in that contract construction oversight services. Now, that directly impacts the quality of the job, the quality of control, and the quality assurance of the project because the designer is the only party who actually knows the intent of the documents. So it is probably not a wise practice not to have them support you during the construction phase. So this increase to this contract was a correction of that defect. It allows for this contract, which has some complexities. There's a sewer line involved. There's potential for flooding if it's not done properly, to make sure that the engineer of record is providing us with construction support services during the implementation phase of this. And that's really what the change is for.
Thank you. I had also emailed, in addition to Michael, I had emailed Tony and Dennis about the dollar value of the water park item. And I know we apparently don't have a hard and fast rule regarding dollar value funding decisions in terms of whether they go in the consent agenda versus whether they're standalone resolutions. But since this water park item was over $500,000, I had just inquired as to whether or not it made more sense for it to be a standalone item, just for purposes of public transparency. And we can continue that conversation for future meetings and whether it makes more sense, or I don't know if you wanted to comment on that now, Tony?
Because we actually have had a guideline, not a hard policy, of $100,000. And this one, there have been exceptions, things that we have no really control over, the recycling contract each year is a large one, and since there's really no debating it, we've let it go as consent item. This was actually just kind of slipped through the cracks, and I'm glad that you guys caught it. But usually, we use $100,000 for a consent.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Next, we have appointments, two sets. First, for the Animal Control Board. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move a resolution to the City Council confirming an appointment to the Animal Control Board. It is in the name of Marie Styles into the Business Community position for a three-year term ending in January 2018.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. And the second set, the second appointment is for the Police Advisory Committee and for the Senior Advisory Committee. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution appointment made by the mayor to the Police Advisory Committee and Senior Advisory Committee. The appointment for Senior Advisory Committee for a two-year term is Kathy Bennett, whose term will go until January of 2017. A reappointment to the Police Advisory Committee, a two-year term, Andrew Bove at January 2017.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have the first of a number of presentations, and we will invite Director of Planning and Code Administration John Schlichting to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am very pleased this evening to introduce our new Historic Preservation Planner, Christopher Berger. He started just last week. Chris comes to us from Sarasota, Florida, where he worked as a preservation planner, and also, before that, a copy editor for the Naples Daily News. Chris and his wife are now city residents. They have moved into an apartment in Lakelands. And Chris has a bachelor's degree in journalism and a master's degree in historic preservation, both from the University of Florida, Gators. He has a blog, listen to this, he has a blog at gatorpreservationist.wordpress.com. And I've checked it out. It is fascinating. We are happy to have Chris on board. He will start the 2015 Master Plan Process by helping us with the historic preservation element. And his first official Historic District Commission meeting will be next Wednesday, January 28th. So please welcome Chris.
Welcome, Chris.
Welcome, Chris.
Give him a round of applause.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for this opportunity. As John mentioned, I moved from Florida, so I could have timed my move a little bit better. But I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to further the historic preservation goals of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, you brought a big crowd with you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
By the way, are there any appointees present for who we just named to Animal Control and to Police and Senior Advisory?
Police and Senior Advisory.
Okay, not seeing anybody. We will congratulate them when we see them. So next, I would like to invite Chief Soroka to the podium. And I will join.
Although the Officer of the Year Award will be presented to one officer tonight, it's the collective effort of all of the officers working together and supporting one another that led to this one officer receiving the 2014 Officer of the Year Award. In January of 2015, the command staff reviewed all the individual nominations for this award and selected Officer Dan Lane as the 2014 Officer of the Year.
All right.
Officer Lane's actions in 2014 demonstrated professionalism, motivation, a strong work ethic, and outstanding overall performance. Officer Lane is joined tonight by his family, who are very proud of him, as I am of his accomplishments. The supervisor of Officer Lane wrote the following in his nomination report for this award, and I quote, "Many times selections for Officer of the Month and Officer of the Year are based on measurable statistics such as arrests and citations, or a specific event or investigation. While these are one aspect of police work, so is service. Service is one of our department's core values. Service is defined by a high level of consistent actions over time that demonstrates the ability and desire to do whatever is needed to ensure our community is safe. This type of service is often not captured on a monthly basis, but rather by an extended body of work over time. In my opinion, the Officer of the Year should demonstrate that they have excelled in all areas of service to the community," end quote. During 2014, Officer Dan Lane has tirelessly worked to keep the city of Gaithersburg a safe place to live and work. He has made himself available to the community by phone, email, and social media virtually around the clock. Officer Lane always checks and responds to citizens, officers, and command staff inquiries on and off duty in furtherance of the department's mission. Officer Lane has been instrumental in the department's use of social media through Facebook and Twitter, thus enabling enhanced communications to the citizens. Officer Lane understands that in his role of the community services officer, one of his most important duties is to assist the patrol officers so they are not burdened with responsibilities that would keep them from their primary duties of enforcing the law, preventing crime, and solving problems. Officer Lane can be heard on the radio day and night checking on community complaints and covers patrol shifts when staffing shortages arise without complaint. During 2014, Officer Lane excelled in providing services to the community and serving as an advisor for the Montgomery County Police Explorers Program, assisting with traffic safety details, bike patrols, serves as an honor guard member, works on the recruitment team, and he teaches DARE at our local teen centers and a local middle school. He also attends and hosts many youth-related initiatives such as Junior Detective Day and Family Nights. In addition to instructing at ESOL meetings, Officer Lane is involved with a variety of minority groups and events on weekends and is always willing to adjust his schedule so the community can feel part of the department. Officer Lane has been commended by citizens for his caring nature, approachability, and knowledge. Officer Lane embodies the department's initial core value of service by providing quality service and protection to all people in an efficient and competent manner tempered with courtesy, compassion, and understanding. It is with great pleasure that I recognize Officer Dan Lane as the 2014 Officer of the Year. Dan, if you could come on.
Congratulations. He was coming up.
I have a big fan, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm just...
No hiding, Dan.
I will now recognize two officers that have been recently promoted, but I want to make a few comments before I present them with their certificates. A career as a police officer is more than a job. It is a calling to a life of sincerity, service, and sacrifice. To become a successful police officer, one must possess a true desire to help others, no matter what the cost. Nowhere is that desire more evident than it ranks with the Gaithersburg Police Department. I want to thank the family and friends of Sergeant Kathy Fairfield and Corporal Everett K-Mac for being here tonight. It's because of your support that has enabled them to advance in their careers. They did not get here alone, as you are the ones that have been there for them in the good times as well as the bad. You have showed patience and understanding when they miss family events as a result of having to work. They will need your continued support now that they have attained positions of greater responsibility. Promotional competitiveness is contingent upon job knowledge, education, training, experience, and performance. Each of the 13 officers desiring promotion to the rank of corporal and sergeant participated in a five-month competitive promotional process that consisted of a written exam, a structured resume outlining their work history, education, training, and if applicable, military experience. They also participated in an oral interview consisting of five operational scenario-based questions. The resumes in oral interviews were scored by a panel of outside assessors from allied Maryland municipal police agencies to ensure objectivity and impartiality. This resulted in a rank-ordered eligibility list. Sergeant Fairfield and Corporal K-Mac excelled through the competitive, comprehensive promotional process as they each finished first in their respective ranks. I commend both of the newly promoted officers for their commitment to ensuring public safety, and I am confident that they will fully embrace their new leadership positions by influencing and motivating those supervised relative to the quality and quantity of their work. An achievement such as theirs comes from more with more than just studying the criminal laws, motor vehicle laws, department general orders, and city ordinances. Their tenure, job experience, and more importantly, motivation from home, has put them in a position to make more of an impact in the Gaithersburg Police Department and this community. Sergeant Fairfield, Corporal K-Mac, you have the responsibility to lead, encourage, mentor, reward, and to hold accountable the subordinate officers under your supervision who are strictly required to obey you as their superior officer. And in this and in all respects, you are to diligently discharge the trust committed to you according to the rules and regulations of the Gaithersburg Police Department, the City of Gaithersburg, the laws of the State of Maryland, and of the United States. Congratulations on your accomplishment in achieving positions of greater responsibility. As you move higher up in rank, you must work longer and harder, as you are not only responsible for yourselves, but also to the men and women that you've entrusted to lead. The things that you do when nobody is watching are the things that define you. I wish each of you and your families the very best that life has to offer. I will call the name of each of the officers, and I will ask the family members that are going to be pinned on their badge to come up and pin on the badge. We'll start with Corporal Everett K-Mac. If I could ask his mother, Vivian, to come up, or we could come to you, ma'am, if that's easier, and his wife, Carrie. Okay. Public Health Services, to come forward, as he'll be pinned on Kathy's badge. I just want to thank the mayor and council for allowing me to hold this event here in the council chambers tonight. And immediately after this, we're going to have a reception back over at the station. So all the family, friends, coworkers, and anybody else is certainly invited to attend and join us back there for the reception. Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation about our Project Search experience, and I'd like to invite Kim Yocelyn and Stephon Hall to the podium.
I'd also like to invite Stephon's mother, Jackie Hall, up to the podium, as well as the other members of the Project Search team, Karen Hochberg from Montgomery County. She's the liaison to Project Search. Justine Zawatski, job coach from SEEK. Michael O'Shaughnessy, instructor from the Ivy Mount School. And Nancy Eby, team leader and new hire support from SEEK.
And I should note, if there's anyone upstairs for this presentation or for any of the upcoming ones, there's now room down here. So please feel free to join.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to recognize Stephon Hall, the city's first, very first Project Search intern. Project Search was founded in 1996 and has grown from a single program site at Cincinnati's Children's Hospital Medical Center to over 300 sites across the United States, Canada, England, Scotland, Ireland, and Australia. Project Search's primary objective is to secure competitive employment for people with disabilities. The program was initiated in Montgomery County by County Executive Ike Leggett after visiting the Project Search NIH program in 2011. Project Search interns participate in three 10-week internships to explore various career paths. Stephon's rotation at the city included work in human resources, finance and administration, and the senior center. Stephon helped with a variety of administrative tasks, including scanning and filing, and even helped out with our Employee Wellness Day. Stephon quickly became a valuable asset to the city, and we hope we imparted skills that will serve him well in what we know will be a very bright future. Stephon and the Project Search team also helped us gain a better understanding of the challenges those with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and reminding us of the importance of approaching life and work with patience and a good sense of humor. We want to take this opportunity to publicly recognize Stephon Hall for his contributions to the city of Gaithersburg. Thank you.
I have a certificate of recognition from the mayor and city council presented to Stephon Hall. In recognition of being the first Project Search Montgomery intern to work with the city of Gaithersburg, thank you for being an exemplary employee in enhancing the work environment for city staff. Best wishes for your continued success in the future, presented this 20th day of January 2015, and signed by me. Congratulations. Thank you.
Would you like to say anything? Please. First and foremost, I'd like to thank all my staff members here in the Gaithersburg City Hall. I give some special thanks to Sarah Fleming, Kim Yocelyn, my job coach, Justine, and my professor, Mr. O'Shaughnessy, and my SEEK boss, Nancy Eby. And I give thanks to that I get to help out here in this wonderful place called the City Hall Building in Gaithersburg. So good deeds, and God bless.
Next, we have the Martin Luther King Literary Awards, and I would like to invite, from the Gazette, Celeste Polster, to join me. So, for the 24th year, 24th, no, we've... The city of Gaithersburg and the Gazette newspaper sponsored the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Literary Arts Contest for Gaithersburg-area students. This year, more than 175 Gaithersburg students addressed the theme, "Dr. Martin Luther King: His Words and Ideas in Our Time." The top three essays from each school were submitted to the city and were judged and scored by members of the Educational Enrichment and Multicultural Affairs Committees. These essays were also entered in the countywide Dr. Martin Luther King Literary Contest. We congratulate this year's winners and extend thanks to all of the students and their teachers for participating in this annual contest. Your work was very impressive, and we're going to invite three, four of them to speak this evening. And first on our agenda is Deepak Menon, a fourth grader from Strawberry Knoll Elementary School. Do we have a... Think of everything. How are you, young man?
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. grew up when America was a nation of people divided by their skin color. Blacks suffered from segregation. They were not allowed to use facilities like churches or restaurants, which were whites only. Dr. King was greatly influenced by nonviolent principles of Mahatma Gandhi. Dr. King believed that physical force could only be defeated by mental strength and a strong will. He lived his entire life to ensure freedom and justice to all. America today is the greatest democracy, thanks to Dr. King. Today, we live in a world that is divided based on culture, nationality, and money. A world where countries fight each other for small reasons. This is not good for the future of the people. Let us share the dream of Dr. King, where justice becomes a reality for all. Let us share Dr. King's dream of creating nations that spend less amount of money on military defense and more resources on programs of social uplift. Let us work hard to set an example to the coming generation that will look upon to us. Let us try to help the poor and needy so that all men who are created equal will be able to live lives of equality. Thank you.
Fantastic. So we're going to call them back up for the awards after? Okay, stay up here. So, next, we have, and that's a tough act to follow. I wouldn't want to follow that. Reeve Abdoukhan, a fourth grader from Rosemont Elementary School. Please, please join us. Congratulations.
Martin Luther King Jr. was a black man who lived in the time of segregation. Blacks and whites were separated in what water fountains they used, what schools they went to, and how they were able to use public buses. Martin Luther King thought that it... Blacks and whites were separated in what water fountains they used, what schools they went to, and how they were able to use public buses. Martin Luther King thought that it was unjust to judge a person by his or her skin color. He led peaceful protests to get equal rights for blacks. He also convinced the blacks not to ride the buses because they were having to give up their seats to whites. Although Martin Luther King Jr. never led violent protests, he believed change could come peacefully. If it wasn't for him, I would not have the friends I have now. I would be looking for colored signs in public areas. Dr. King's words finally paid off in 1964 when the Civil Rights Act was passed. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was a great man who wanted to make a difference.
Go stay up here. Reeve, stay with us, stay with us. Next, we have Samantha Howling, 4th grader from Strawberry Knoll. Welcome, Samantha.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. taught us to treat all people with the same equality. His "I Have a Dream" speech inspired all Americans to be kind to people no matter what they look like. Back in the 1950s, the African-Americans and whites were kept apart from one another. They went to different schools, ate at different restaurants, and rode on different buses. Nowadays, they go to the same schools and live together. I appreciate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. because without his speech, who knows if we would get along today? He sacrificed his life for African-American rights, and I appreciate that. Without his words, I may not have the friends that I have today. Without his speech, people might still be going to different schools, restaurants, and buses just because of their skin. That is unfair. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. impacted on our lives today.
Melanie Fernandez, you're 4th grader, right? Please join us, from Rosemont Elementary. We, by the way, Melanie was a countywide winner of this contest, and we had the opportunity to see her read yesterday at Strathmore before the county executive and the rest of us. Thanks.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s words and ideas still mean a lot to us because they changed the world. What Martin Luther King Jr. said in 1963 was that his dream was that the children of the future will have equal rights. This has become true today because now all children in our country have equal rights. For example, they can go to the school for their neighborhood no matter what color their skin is. Everyone now can go to any restaurant, be hoped in an emergency room, without blacks having to wait for all of the white patients to be cared for first. And blacks do not have to give up their seats on the bus for anyone. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is my hero because he helped all of the people.
Yes, so, should we do one at a time, or should we invite all the families? Okay. All the families, please join us for a picture. Yeah, okay. This is what, everyone's getting a certificate of recognition, which says, "Certificate of Recognition from the Mayor and City Council for sharing your writing talents and participating in the 24th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Literary Arts Contest. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr: His Words and Ideas in Our Time, presented this 20th day of January 2015, and signed by me." Congratulations to all of you. Families, please join us. Any families, teachers, anybody, please join us for a picture. You get to move this one up. Come on, come on back.
Everybody move back.
Sort of getting near your child. There's room over here, too. We can sort of spread over this way.
I'm going to let all the cell phones go first.
Going to need panoramic.
Hang on for the official.
Okay.
May I jump in one? Switch to one of the teachers. Thank you. That's a nice lucky teacher.
You good? You good? Next, I would like to invite Yvette Monroe to join me here for the Person of Character Award. And I will let you do your thing.
Good evening. Gaithersburg Person Business of Character Award recognizes individuals and organizations that consistently strive to exemplify the six pillars of character. Award recipients must live or work within the city and make a positive impact on the community as a result of their actions. Tonight, we are pleased to honor Linda Hanson with this award. In both her private and professional life, Linda embodies the six pillars of character. As a parent, as a longtime member and officer of the Gaithersburg Rotary Club, and through her work with the Gaithersburg High School Interact Club, Linda has made an impact on the lives of many in a caring, respectful, and trustworthy way. She has shown respect for all people of all backgrounds in her work, from post-prom coordination to running a religious bookstore to actively participating in the city holiday giving program. Linda's commitment to volunteerism and values of citizenship are evident in her long-term work with Gaithersburg Health. As one of her peer sites, Linda is the glue that holds the organization together. As this is an all-volunteer agency, and we continue to serve hundreds of city residents with much-needed food, prescription medication assistance, and transportation services. Her enthusiasm demonstrated in her unwavering dedication to service collaboration has been extraordinary and demonstrates a true commitment to fairness and respectful service. Linda's citizenship is also demonstrated in her participation as a member of the city's Old Town Advisory Committee since 2000, and the Old Town Park Plaza Design Committee. Thank you, Linda, for being such a model of character counts.
So, before I read this certificate, I just wanted to note that there was a small reception for Linda before this meeting, and as it would, as fitting for Linda, in the middle of it, we all sort of stopped and started brainstorming ideas to do good things in the community. It was quite excellent, and just, it just, it just very fitting. So, this is a certificate of recognition from the mayor and city council of Gaithersburg, presented to Linda Hanson as recipient of the city of Gaithersburg's Person of Character Award for consistently modeling, for consistent modeling of the Character Counts program as an outstanding member of our society and a role model for all. Presented this 20th day of January 2015, and signed by me. Congratulations. You good? Okay. Not necessary, but you're welcome to.
I just look forward to seeing other people come up here in the future because they're great opportunities to help the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Wait, we're doing the... So, our next presentation is, I would like to invite Michelle Potter to join me with the Kentlands Lakelands 5K.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to call up John Angracia, the Kentlands Community Foundation Chair, Ruth Zaley Wyke, the co-chair, and Carrie Dietz, the foundation director. Oh, good evening. The 21st Kentlands Lakelands 5K was just held about five months ago on August 30th. It is hosted by the Kentlands Community Foundation in partnership with the city of Gaithersburg to raise funds, promote volunteerism, and showcase the benefits of new urbanism and walkable communities. The Running Festival drew approximately 1,200 participants, nearly 900 in the 5K, and over 300 in the kids' fun runs. This event also serves as the Maryland State Senior Olympic Qualifier for the 5K. Of the 284 athletes who competed in the 50-plus age groups, 84 or nearly 30% qualified for the 2015 National Senior Games in Bloomington, Minneapolis-St. Paul. The 5K will be held on July 6th. The race t-shirt design contest, which I happen to have, was won by Mariana Ruiz, a 5th grade student at Rachel Carson Elementary School. A special program was offered to the Kentlands residents this year to commemorate the Kentlands' 2050 anniversary whereby residents who completed the 5K course five times for a total of 25K earned a special limited edition t-shirt. About 75 participants took advantage of this venture. A highlight of this event is the winner with a time of 15:33 or about a five-minute mile was Nicholas Cruzier of Gaithersburg, a real local. The 5K Running Festival benefits local charities, including a $10,500 contribution tonight to the city's Deloitte Sawyer Scholarship Fund. With this generous amount, the foundation has donated a total of $132,356 over the past This fund assists families financially for participation in the city's summer camps program. So, we thank you very much. Did you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor Ashman, and the city council, and the police department. You already have your copy. Thank you for making it possible for us to do this work and to help the kids of the city that really need this. It's a fantastic testament to the city and the people here that were able to do this every year, and we look forward to doing it for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Round? Our next presentation is on the Stream Restoration/Reforestation Project, and we are calling Maura Dinwiddie and Jamie Cantorero-Rodriguez to the podium. Please.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm with the City's Youth Services Division, and I'll be introducing our student representative tonight that will share more detail about what this project was all about, to give you a quick overview in 2013 as part of Governor O'Malley's Stream Restoration Challenge. The city was awarded a $114,000 grant by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources to establish streamside forests. The grant for reforestation in Gaithersburg was made possible by a partnership between the city, Gaithersburg High School, and Audubon Naturalist Society. The scope of this project was immense and required the involvement of many city staff, community partners, and volunteers. And I'd quickly like to just thank a few key players who helped make it possible. Adam Newhart and Mark Coburn from our Public Works Department and their crew. Meredith Strider, who worked with Adam and Mark to locate the planting sites. Louise Kaufman, who managed the grant. Karen Verden from Audubon Naturalist Society, who led the education component. And Margaret Van Buschirk from Gaithersburg High School, who sponsors the ESOL SSL Club and was key in recruiting our student volunteers. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Jamie.
Hello. I'm from, I'm a student from Gaithersburg High School.
Welcome.
I'm an apt member of the Student Union and GHS ESOL SSL Club. So, this is our student report. The grant provides learning and service opportunities for youth in Gaithersburg. We learn many benefits of trees. As you see the map, we study maps of the Chesapeake Bay watershed. We walk the high school, Gaithersburg High School watershed. As you see in this map, the city foresters came to GHS to explain city sites where we will plant trees. We help flag the sites and learn why trees are placed in certain locations. Foresters explain the type of trees we planted. We plant different kinds of trees, different kinds of oak trees, red maples, and many different kinds of trees. We learn about public comment process and help prepare mailing to our neighborhoods. Audubon Naturalist Society educators came to GHS to teach about animals and plant habitats. We learn how trees provide food and shelter to wildlife. We start, in the process of planting trees, we start the trees in pre-dug holes. We fill the holes and cover with mulch. We stack the trees and sell their protection. We learned that trees renew our air supply by absorbing carbon dioxide and producing oxygen for the synthesis. At tree plantings, we work with multi-branch aliens, Wildlife Habitat Council, Montgomery County Conservation Corps, and others organizations. We learned that trees reduce noise pollution by acting as sound barriers. People say we work, people say we work, whoa. People say we work hard, and they will hire us in the future.
That's good news.
We learn about teamwork and professionalism and careers. We did experiments with soil, mulch, and water to determine which is better for streams, as you see in the pictures. We did stream studies and learned that trees improve water quality by slowing and filtering rainwater. We liked the stream studies. We connect, well, we learn in school with environment and community. We learn about root of water. Here, we're planting trees in a rain garden. We learned that tree roots stabilize soil and prevent erosion. We tell others how to plant trees and how trees help the environment. These nine grades, nine graders students from Central America have been in Gaithersburg for a few months. They are learning English, as I am. Planting trees is a great activity for learning English while helping others outdoors and making new friends. Students from many different academics, programs at GHS and other schools, and other schools worked together and became friends. The city of Gaithersburg administered the grant. They provided us with bus transportation, snacks, and chaperones. GHS students participate in an H2O summit sponsored by Montgomery County Department and of Environment, of Environmental Protection, sorry, and Washington Support Program, Sanitary Commission. We show others why trees are important for erosion and filtering water. We had the most students volunteer at GHS H2O summit. The WCCSSC gave us a price of 100 pairs of workloads for planting trees.
I guess they want you to do more work.
I guess they want you to do more work.
Student Union, a program, a program of the City of Gaithersburg Department of Parks, Recreation and Culture, was recognized by the Mayor of Gaithersburg and City Council for participating in the tree planting projects. The City of Gaithersburg awarded the GHS ESOL SSL Club with Ring Awards in 2013 and 2014. 100, 655 trees planted in Gaithersburg, plus, and 300 students volunteered. Nine organizations involved in planting projects. We thank, we thank you for the opportunity. We thank you for your time, and we thank you.
That deserves it. Thank you, Maura. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have public comments. This is the time when the mayor and city council sets aside for anyone to come before us on any topic that's not a public hearing topic on tonight's agenda, and we have no public hearings, so you can speak about whatever you like. We ask that you keep your remarks to no more than three minutes. Please note that the timer will beep and blink yellow when you have 30 seconds left of your three minutes so that you may begin to finish your statement. The timer will beep and turn red when your three minutes is up. Please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone who would like to speak this evening? Whoever gets there first goes first.
My name is Aaron Rosenzweig. I live on 1 Thorburn Road. Yesterday was January 19th, a day in which we honor the moral character of Dr. Martin Luther King and his dream. I have a dream that my six little chickens will one day live in a city where they will not be judged by the feathers on their skin, but by the content of their character. Gaithersburg is a character-count city after all. In a sense, we've come to cash a check. When the architects of our republic wrote the magnificent words of the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, they were signing a promissory note to which every American was to fall heir. This note was a promise that all pets, yes, chickens as well as dogs and cats, would be guaranteed the unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is obvious today that Gaithersburg has defaulted on this promissory note. Instead of honoring the sacred obligation, Gaithersburg has given chickens a bad check, a check which has come back marked insufficient funds. But we refuse to believe that the Bank of Justice is bankrupt. We refuse to believe that there are insufficient funds in the great vaults of opportunity of this city, and so we've come to cash this check, a check that will give all chickens upon demand the riches of freedom and the security of justice. We have also come to this hallowed spot to remind Gaithersburg of the fierce urgency of now. This is no time to engage in the luxury of cooling off or to take the tranquilizing drug of gradualism. Now is the time to make real the promises of democracy. Now is the time to rise from the dark and desolate valley of pet superiority to the sombre path of pet justice. Now is the time to lift our city from the quicksands of pet injustice to the solid rock of pet equality. Now is the time to make justice a reality for all of God's creatures. We cannot walk alone. We cannot turn back. And so, even though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day the City of Gaithersburg will rise up and live out the true meaning of the creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all creatures are created equal. If Gaithersburg should truly be a pro-chicken city, we cannot ban roosters. Rooster bans enable abusive process. It opens the door to false claims. It gives citizens who despise chickens a tool to do harm. It gives them an excuse to call the city and say, "I think I see a rooster." It forces animal control officers to make, have to make a judgment call on the sex of an animal, all of this to enforce an unjust city code. I ask you, if there is no noise, who should care? For someone who keeps nothing but hands, the rooster ban causes them constant grief. Roosters can be noisy, but they don't have to be. It depends on their owners. Pit bulls can be deadly, but they don't have to be. It depends on their owners. Sports cars can drive dangerously, but they don't have to. It depends on their owners. On December 15th, I asked. On January 5th, I asked. Today, on the 20th, 20th of January, I ask again, please do not unjustly remove our freedoms. Lift the rooster ban.
Thank you.
Kathy, did you ask last time?
You can submit test, your written testimony to.
This is my written testimony. She asked for.
Well, your, your three minutes is up, so.
You can give it to me.
Please, please give it to Doris.
I'll make sure they get it.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Steve Shapiro. I'm at two-station House Court in Gaithersburg, and that's the community of Saybrook. First off, I want to thank you for your service to the community, and this is my first time before you, my first meeting. I do want to warn you that in about 15 years, one of those four kids will be sitting in one of your seats. So, take that to heed. But I, I come before you today both as a representative of Saybrook, I'm on their Board of Directors for the HOA, and also as a homeowner there. My first, first comment is actually, I want to thank Tony for his efforts with what's going on on Victory Farm. Seems that that area, if you don't know, has been kind of turning into a park-and-ride situation over there. And Tony's been very instrumental in helping us and his crew, helping us take care of some of the parking regulations over there, and it's a work in progress, and I hope that we continue that as we get closer and closer to the softball, baseball season over there. It's going to be getting even worse over there. In another note, that's kind of personal to me, I'm going to ask you to paint some light poles. We did contact the city. We were told that, and I have some pictures here of some of these poles. Our poles are getting pretty worn down through, some of them anyway, a good number of them, mostly because of probably sun and, and just wearing over time. One of the comments, though, when we did ask the city, they don't make cosmetic adjustments to these light poles. That's what we were told. I find that hard to believe. But besides cosmetic, you might take a look at, if someone would go out and take a look at these things, they're fiberglass, I believe, that they're made out of, and so with the paint coming off of them, they get a little rough to the touch, that kind of thing. So, it does need a coating, so it's a little more than cosmetic. There's probably about 30 or 40 poles in the community that, that need an adjustment, but it is cosmetic as well, and so I'd like you to take a look at that. And then, that's it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just one question.
Yes.
Are they light poles for streetlights, or are they in the park?
Yeah, they're, they're.
Streetlight poles?
Well, not that kind, the upright, standard upright.
Yeah, but along the street.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers this evening?
I'm Beth Junian from the community of Saybrook. I'm their city liaison. Evidently, the restoration of these light poles was put into the budget either last year or the year before, I'm not sure, and it seems as though it just keeps getting pushed back, pushed back. Steve is correct. The poles are graying, and as our community ages, I was told by the city they're going to do everything they can to kind of keep us looking fresh, and this is something that we really, truly need, is to have these light poles painted black. They're not 30 of, how many do you say, about 30?
30 or 40.
30. So, I just wanted to let you know that we had been told it was put in the budget a few years ago, so maybe you can check on that.
Thank you.
And Tony, thank you for all your help.
Sure, Beth. Tony, do you want to look into that?
I mean, no.
Good. Okay. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Hearing none. We will move on to from the mayor and council, and tonight we will start with Henry Moraffa.
Let me make a quick comment. Tony, that's been a ongoing thing, and I think the city's been pretty good at watching those poles, because I know they went through our neighborhood after a few years and painted a bunch of them. They really, paint does really, you know, and I, I think this, this staff is really keeps an eye out for that, so. I know that, I don't know if it's a bunch of them that just happened to be all installed at the same time, but they really not weathered very well. Anyway, the couple of things we did over the last couple of weeks, we all attended the new opening down in Annapolis at MML reception. It was a nice time. We got a chance to meet a lot of people, have some private conversations, some things that are going to happen this year, and hopefully will be well worth going down it, because a lot of them were paying attention to things that needed to be done, and I was, I came away enthused. We also hosted the local MML meeting that night. We all attended. I attended a meeting the other night for, at Diamond Elementary School on their new design thing, and they have a series of meetings, I have another one coming up, I think it's next week, and they wanted redo the school, and the plans really looked good, had a lot of good comments. The only thing, and Mike, you may have heard this, because of being in the neighborhood, they're talking about the berm, and I said to concentrate on the school and not worry about the land. The neighbors really want the berm, and it has nothing to really do with the school, so that was my one big, but otherwise, I was pretty pleased with what, what the, looked like they were going to do with that school, and it will really increase the capacity. And I am going to again be a judge for Future Cities Contest, which is a national contest for kids in the eighth and ninth grades. John Schlichting and I both used to do it a number of years ago, and they build model cities, and they, and they take it into, into their design studies, the tax, taxes, and farms, and, and the environment and everything, and it's a really neat thing. February the 6th is when the judging is going to be downtown, at, right at Union Station and at the hotel there, and we'll be down there, but that's a really good thing. It's one thing, I think, I'm not sure that our schools really get involved in it, and I'm going to see if I can't get the schools to take a more, a bigger interest, or maybe they do, and we just haven't been in, the winners in the contest, but some of the models that I've seen over the years are really, really spectacular, so. And I want to congratulate everybody tonight who was appointed. I want to point out, especially Kathy Fairfield, because I've known her since she was a little girl, so I have a special place in my heart for Kathy, and she, her parents actually bought my house in Olney when I, when I moved out, so I've known her for a long time. So, congratulations to everybody.
Right.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Not good night yet. I want to start also by congratulating all of our honorees tonight, from our outstanding police officers to our incredible students that were, who were on display with their achievements earlier this evening, and if you'll permit me a, a moment of reflection, I was just thinking, at the beginning of the meeting, what a stark contrast to the recent tensions in many places around our nation between police and minority groups. And here in Gaithersburg City Hall, we had a packed crowd tonight with a diverse community of mutually supportive citizens, celebrating both the police and the winners of our Martin Luther King Literary Essay Contest, who were teaching us about the importance of fighting racism and of pursuing equality, as well as the achievements of other minority student groups and those with disabilities who've served our community. So, it's just a really incredible evening of positivity and accomplishment and strength in our diversity. We are all in this together, and it's just a wonderful thing to see. It makes me very proud of the way that Gaithersburg as a city operates to rise above many of the challenges that confront other communities. So, I just wanted to say that as I observed tonight's proceedings. In addition to the, the opening day reception in Annapolis that many of us attended on behalf of the Maryland Municipal League, we also hosted a chapter meeting of the Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League here in Gaithersburg. We invited municipal leaders from around the county to join us and had a very good meeting this past week, hosted at the Kentlands Mansion. It was also a great opportunity for us to show off the mansion as a great resource that we have here in the city and let folks outside the city know a little more about it. I also hope that all of you had a meaningful Martin Luther King holiday. Hopefully, many of you got the opportunity to engage in some community service. I know the county ran a number of programs to give people the opportunity to do that as well. And want to remind everybody that, hopefully, our meeting will be adjourned by then, that tonight is the President's State of the Union Address, and we'll be paying attention to the important policy debate that will be ongoing this evening and in the following days. Believe it or not, there are a lot of things that happen at the federal level that do affect municipalities, and so we'll be watching that. I do have a formal announcement. After a closed executive session, a closed meeting was held at City Hall by the mayor and city council on Monday, January 5th, 2015, at approximately 8:48 PM pursuant to a motion adopted unanimously. Meeting was proposed to be closed pursuant to the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B8, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The topics, the topic discussed was potential litigation. Present at the meeting were Mayor Ashman, council members Drizgula, Harris, Moraffa, Sesma, and Spiegel, City Manager Thomasello, Deputy City Manager Enslinger, City Attorney Board Assistant City Attorney Johnson, and Planning and Code Administration Director Schlichting, and Public Works Director Johnson, both of whom left at 9:38 PM. Upon conclusion of the discussion, the closed meeting was adjourned at approximately 9:48 PM. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil?
This afternoon, I had the, the pleasure and privilege of, of participating in my first official ribbon coveting event. I'm going to try to cut it cleaner next time, but this was for a company called Auxilian, Auxilian Technologies, which has opened up shop in the Launch Workplaces, kind of an incubator space over at the Washingtonian Center. Impressive company, impressive facility. We're very pleased that they're in Gaithersburg. I was joined at that event by Kathy Drizgula and by our Economic Development Director, Tom Lonergan, who lurked in the background, but I'm sure was responsible for much of what went on.
Lurked.
The.
A lurker, huh?
He was lurking very conspicuously. The, I'd also like to just chime in on the, the meetings we've had with our, members of our state delegation in Annapolis and locally. It's very clear that there, there's, everyone recognizes that the top priorities at this point are funds for school construction and transportation and transit. I don't know how easy that will be to achieve this year, given the budgetary constraints that we're under, but our delegation appears to be completely unified behind what needs to be done, so hopefully, things will go well, and we'll learn more as, as time passes shortly. And finally, just as a side note, I'd like to note that we had a brief discussion about civil forfeitures a couple of weeks ago, and apparently, the word got to the White House and the, the executive branch, because Attorney General Holder has now pulled back on the government policy toward civil forfeiture, so we will think about other far-reaching issues that affect our nation and make suggestions as appropriate. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay. Environmental Affairs Committee met last week. They're busy planning Green Week activities for April, where we usually suggest an activity every day of the week that you can do to be involved in protecting or improving the environment in our community. We're also looking to show an environmental film that week. I also attended Chesapeake Bay Water Quality Committee meeting at the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. We had a presentation on the Conawingo Dam, which is on the Susquehanna, it's in Maryland. It's, there are three dams on the Susquehanna. This is the last of the three. The other two are in Pennsylvania. And up until recently, it'd been thought that the dam pretty much trapped most of the sediment that came down the Susquehanna. The Susquehanna is, if you don't know, is a big river. It's the biggest tributary to the Chesapeake Bay, and the dams in Pennsylvania had sort of silted full, but Conawingo hadn't reached that point. But in the last few summers, it's become apparent that the dam may store sediment for a while, but then we get a heavy rainfall event, and there's scouring of the dirt behind the dam, and it flows over, and so it's kind of an equilibrium. It can hold a little bit more for a while, and then we lose it, which is kind of a critical change for the efforts to improve water quality in the bay. The dirt itself is not so much a problem, as it said, as the pollutants it carries with it. And in fact, in, in the calculations and assignment of reductions in pollutions required, people upstream from the dam had not been given penalty or credit for pollutants coming past the dam, and now it's clear that that's not the accurate situation. So, there will be basically more pollutants added to the calculations of what's going into the bay. into the bay and there'll have to be more reductions, whether they're just on the Susquehanna watershed or if they distribute them throughout the state to offset that. So that will be a big change in, in the water pollution diet, the TMDLs, which are being revised in, in their midpoint of 2017. I think it's probably good that they figured this out, but it does, it's going to put, make things more complicated through people, for people in all parts of Maryland most likely. I also attended and enjoyed the county and Gaithersburg sponsored Martin Luther King Event. I think that Leon Harris did a great job of announcing it and being the emcee and, and all the presenters were, were quite talented and entertaining. Also at that event and with our speakers today, I've really been happy to hear people making, you know, we, we celebrate Martin Luther King Day every year, but I think this year people were thinking on a more personal basis, perhaps events in the world have reminded us what we have yet to do. And I, I think it's just really nice to see people relating directly to what Martin Luther King has said and done and finding ways that we can apply it in our lives still today. As Neil mentioned, I attended the Auxilian Ribbon Cutting and also one for Curves Exercise Salon on North Summit Avenue. This is a place intended for women, it has a 30-minute circuit workout, so you don't have to worry about guys when you're there, that makes you, if you like to sit and talk to your friends or whatever, the people there seem really friendly. It's on North Summit, basically behind Victorlitz. And there was also a ceremony at Diamond Elementary School. They renamed their media center in honor of the principal, Carol Lang, who retired last year and the community really pulled together, there was a wonderful turnout under her and all she'd done for that school. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, I don't have much to add, just want to congratulate especially Officer Dan Lane, our Officer of the Year, and our two Sergeant Fairfield and Corporal Kamek. I think they exemplify the quality and professionalism of the, of the police force and the relationship that they have, that our police have with the community and I think that it's a lot, has a lot to do with how effective our police force is and how, and the job that they're able to keep, to keep the peace and make us a safe community. The event yesterday with the, with Montgomery County that we apparently cosponsor was a great event and it's, it's always good to be there. I particularly am glad for Kathy's remarks, I think she, she hit the nail on the head. So finally I want to thank again the Kentlands Community Foundation for their generous support of the Dolores Sawyer Scholarship Fund. I've been able to, I've been a participant and a beneficiary of their activities, their volunteer activities. The KCF is a great partner with the city, it's great to work with them, they do, we do a lot of things together that I think that, but the highlight of the year is always the, the 5K and so I've got, I think, nine years' worth of t-shirts now that I've been running in, so. But apparently I'm the only council member that's able to run that far now, so. So we'll, we'll see what happens in the future, so. I guess that was, I was throwing out the gauntlet.
He's not a council member.
Were you referring to the others or?
Well, the mayor and the council, so apparently you guys just, well, anyway. So thank you to the KCF again for your generosity and thank you for all those who support those events and everything that the KCF does in cooperation with the city. There's still about, I think, 18 events coming up in the, in the, in the 25 events associated with the 25th anniversary of Kentlands and so pay attention to that as well. And that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to bring up a couple of items and, and join my colleagues in the thanks and congratulations for everyone. First off, pursuant to a tragic incident we had on the CSX tracks a couple of weeks ago, CSX approached the city for a meeting and staff and I joined them at that meeting during which we discussed potential ideas to improve safety. In this case, the, the 18-year-old who was struck by the train happened to be walking across the tracks with earbuds in, with the hoodie all the way up and probably looking at, at his cellphone as he was walking and it was sort of a distracted walking situation, which is a real problem, not just at train tracks, but at intersections and other places as well. Another county had a campaign a year or two ago about distracted walking, so it's something to be aware of, but coming out of the meeting, CSX had expressed their intent to put up some more signs, to do some more enforcement. They have their own security police force that, that periodically enforces crossings of the tracks and, and so we'll see what sort of, if staff is, is considering what, what best might, might work for the future, so. We're, this is on our minds, so just wanted to update you on that. And I wanted to remind everyone, I haven't done this in a while, but Alert Gaithersburg is, particularly around wintertime, is an important service for all of us and all you need to do to go sign up for this free service, to get notifications to your mobile devices and to your, to your email is go to gaithersburgmd.gov/alerts. And I also wanted to note that we were, we all hosted a Maryland Municipal League chapter meeting last week at the Kentlands Mansion, which went very nicely. Next week, we have a work session with two items, review of the quarter development CD zone and comprehensive rezoning and 355 capital improvement options, so should be interesting topic, a couple topics, and next we have from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few administrative items and then I'll do the parking program from the podium. The first is somewhat following on the earlier comments on solar panels on the building, the Council of Governments will be holding a green purchasing vendors fair, I know that's something that, that we've expressed interest in. It's intended to bring together vendors of green and environmentally friendly products with government purchasing officials. We have one of those, Wes Rhodes, who's agreed to attend and see, bring back whatever information he can that he thinks will be useful.
Excellent.
It's on January 29th. I also reported previously that the final unit at the Summit Crossing project here in Old Town was going to go to settlement and that has now occurred. I wanted to take one minute to go through just a few statistics about that project, if I could, it was kind of a unique initiative for us. Summit Crossing is the townhouse and two-over-two development up North Summit. It was built in two phases, 23 units in phase one and 21 in phase two, so 44 units total. Of that, 36 received city down payment assistance totaling $259,500, which was a little less than we had allocated to this, so in fact about $57,000 will be getting returned to the city. So we provided about $7,200 per unit. The median sales price in phase one was $310,000. It took about five years to get phase two started, but the median sales price in that is $374,000. So a nice jump and the highest priced unit actually was, just broke the 400,000 market, 407,000. This is, was the only straight grant program dedicated to homeownership in the city. The current homeowner's assistance loan program is recoverable and thus kind of is self-sustaining. Part of the uniqueness of the program and frankly the aggressiveness of the program was because Old Town continues to be such a high priority for us, but also that homeownership, you know, goes hand in hand with that, with economic development, with revitalization of Old Town. So we thought that this was appropriate to, to go a little bit extra step. And this was a development that, you know, everyone knows struggled a bit to find its niche. I mean, it could in fact have not broken ground in phase two, if it were phase one, could have perhaps gone rental. We're not really sure, we'll never know at this point, but we did add about $15 million to the tax base for the 44 units that, that will generate about $35,000 a year, which frankly, you know, the, the finance guy in me says it's about 13% return on our investment, about $215,000, $59,000. So in fact, you know, putting our money to work, you know, taking it out of reserve and putting it to work, not only had, you know, obviously excellent policy benefits for us, but actually tangible benefits for us as well, you know, we will be getting those revenues indefinitely. So job well done by a lot of people, especially the housing folks, especially Louise up in finance, and really the two builders that built the two phases work hand in hand with us as well. So it was really a nice, a nice partnership.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that.
It's really nice to see the project kind of come to a close, because this was really one of the first things that we did in terms of generating, or supporting a project that would promote homeownership in the Old Town area for first-time homebuyers that took advantage of the state loan programs, I believe, as well as our programs, so, and, and I think it was, it's great to see how that's worked out and your comment about the return on the investment, I think is probably the most important, because that's, in a way, we talk about homeownership as being the most fundamental form of economic development in a city, that's a great example of what, what we've done here, so thanks for that, that update.
It was interesting, because we, we actually sold some land into this assemblage, city-owned surplus property, just months pre-recession, and we sold it for in excess of $2 million, which, you know, two years later, we couldn't have, we might have been asked to give it away and might have done so in support of Old Town, so it's really, it's really been a win-win for us, so. And then at their point, I, I just, while other comments were being made, looked up the street lighting capital plan, which says specifically that we will repaint discolored and fiberglass poles on light, so while Steve and Beth are still here. There has been money budgeted this year and next, not a huge amount, $5,000 a year, but I'm sure Michael and or Dennis have already written down a note and we should know whether we can get to those pretty soon.
Thank you.
So this is a report back on the East Air Park parking program. On October 17th, we, and you, you know some of this background, but I'm just going to go through it really quickly, we did mail a survey to residents, 218 residents in what was considered the impacted area. Might have actually skipped a slide here, I'm not sure how to go back. Okay, well, it's full screens, if anybody knows how to go backwards, please let me know.
The back arrow.
There it is. Okay, so on October 6th, a group of residents presented a petition asking that a permit parking program be instituted in their neighborhood. A committee comprised of city staff was formed to study the situation in that particular neighborhood, but also to review the overall parking permit program. On October 17th, surveys were mailed to the 218 homes to determine if there was consensus, consensus for a parking program and, and what type of program the majority of residents in the impacted area might support. And we also tried surveying students as to why they were parking in the neighborhood using Survey Monkey. Results of the surveys were frankly inconclusive, I reported that at a subsequent council meeting. We then decided to hold a community meeting on December 10th. I know Kathy was there and I believe Neil was there for about half, to come up with a proposed two-hour parking program so that they could evaluate something specific, the actual benefits and drawbacks of a program, and we got good attendance, 43 residents attended the meeting. The proposed program stated that any vehicle not displaying a permit would be limited to two-hour parking. Each household would be issued two permits to be renewed regularly every one or two years, you could get a third if you really needed it for $50. And we learned at the meeting that there were some, we did not believe there were, but it turns out there were, some houses that did not have a driveway, so they could get a third permit for no charge. Implementation, why does it just keep moving by itself? Implementation required the posting of 146 parking signs spaced approximately 150 feet apart, this is a map of the location of the parking signs. And frankly, this was of some concern to people when they saw how many signs would go in front of homes and on corners. During the meeting, there was clearly mixed feedback, some residents favored and some opposed the parking plan at all. All of them were advised that a follow-up survey would be mailed and that what they needed to vote for or against, the time for different, we had to have something tangible that a majority of people were ready to go and move forward with. So we did send out actually additional surveys, because we added the far side of Lynn Road, I believe, so that moved the, moved the number of surveyed households up. We sent that out on December 31st, responses were due back on January 12th, though in fact, we, we have received responses as latest today and all were tabulated. This is a new slide that's not in your package, because this is today's results, 243 mailed, we got a great response, 56%.
Great.
90, or more than two to one are opposed to the program at this point, so. What our intention, if you will support that, is to send a follow-up communication advising people, A, the way the vote went, but also if you have someone parked within five feet of your driveway, you call non-emergency police assistance, that type of thing, if they see littering, what to do, those types of things, since it does not look like, well, clearly, most of the neighborhood is opposed to the program. Then there's phase two, we would like to standardize the permit parking program, so we will probably later in the year choose additional communities, especially the ones that are effectively uncontrolled, where we believe there may be up to 10 permits attached to single residents, which could be contributing to overcrowding, and see where, see where this goes, but we think the model that we have, when everyone is equally informed and we can go that extra step to, to make sure people actually know what they're getting into, turned out to be really useful. And we'll report back on where we get, so. Any questions on that?
Tony, I have some questions on it, because I've been involved with some of these parking things and there's, you know, pros and cons and, you know, I, I understand the neighbors wanting to keep their streets free, but at the same time, there are some things that people don't, unintended consequences, service trucks coming in doing work. And having been in the construction business and service work, I've been fighting these things when I would go into areas and they want to give you a ticket, you're trying to do work at somebody's house and you can't park there and then, you know, it's, it's a real mess. What happens if you have, you know, like the third car for $50? Well, they're taxpayers, they should be able to park in front of their house for free. So they should be granted as many, you know, parking permits as they need and what happens on, you know, holidays and, one of the things that wasn't clear to me was that, is there a time limit, like in, like from school hours or something like that? I mean, who is the real culprit? Is it the students or is it the church or is it, you know, people from outside parking there? And if we target them, you know, specifically, then maybe we can, you know, come up with a better, you know, I think there's a reason they had, you know, most people were opposed to it, so. And because one of the problems you have is that, you know, parking is a $60 fine and you've got somebody, you know, coming over, grandma comes over and visits and forgets and she gets a $60 fine, it would be, you're going to get a phone call. And so those are, those are the downsides and so, you know, they need to be thought through very carefully, but at the same time, target the problem so that, you know, we can get the neighborhoods free, people can use their, you know, their neighborhoods and park their cars and not have to worry that they're taken up. So these are some questions that I just wanted to make sure that were out and, you know, make sure they all got covered.
I, you know, I think they were, as a matter of fact, and if the, the issue of service vehicles came up, I believe service vehicles are actually exempt under our code. But if 10 people live in a house and four of them work as service people, I'm not sure that those were getting tickets. There, there was a lot of talk about, you know, what the issue was in this particular neighborhood, but it seems to be different in other neighborhoods. So in this case, it was, it was students, though it wasn't always student parking, it was student behavior, it was littering, it was noise and those types of things. Some residents of, of the neighborhood were clearly more jarred by having strangers in the neighborhood than others. And some recognize that in fact, you know, that sense of ownership of the street in front of your house is in fact, and not an exact characterization, you know, you don't maintain that particular piece of street or pay for it with your tax dollars or, you know, it's a public street, very much like we're running into in Victory Farm, a street that was designed for on-street parking, but not for people to drive five miles away to. to park there and leave commercial vehicles. So a lot of, as a matter of fact, everything that you brought up was discussed, either in the group or in public.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's worth pointing out that this in particular was a specific instance where the neighborhood was affected by parking during the construction of the new Gaithersburg High School, which was a three-year project, but which is now completed. And so everyone had been led to believe that when the new school and parking lots were finished, that the student parking would disappear, and that wasn't happening. I think by this point, it has, part of why there wasn't a lot of support for it in the end is also the number of students parking there has gone down quite a bit compared to the beginning of the year.
True.
Which I think has been beneficial for everybody.
So Tony, with the survey responses, did you get any kind of qualitative data on why so many people were opposed to the program? Was it, in fact, because there's not much of a problem in this particular neighborhood, or was it actually kind of the structure of the program that people had an issue with?
We asked them to vote specifically on the structure of the program. There was a box for yes and a box for no.
But in the meeting, people, I mean, there was a variety of opinion in the public meeting. And a lot of it depended on where people lived. Some people didn't have any parking problem on their street, so the signs were the biggest issue to them, that they didn't want to have signs when they didn't think they had a problem. Some people who had parking on their street were bothered by it. Some people were completely open to it. So there was really, the one thing that was very apparent from the community meeting we had was that there was no, you know, common core of the way people felt about it. There was really diverse opinions on it, really because it affected people differently, and they looked at it differently. I mean, there was a little undertone, too, with it, was this really about student parking or something else? So some people objected to it because they didn't think parking was the real issue. They thought people were using this to address overcrowding, which certainly wasn't why we, you know, came up with the idea in the first place. The community came to us, and it's a program similar, similar to what was in place in all the other neighborhoods around the high school.
So is there any sense of the responses from, from the streets that are more impacted than other streets? You know, the ones right off of, for instance, 355, closest to the school? Was there more?
Those have always been pretty mixed, even in the original.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I think that we need, we do need to look at our general parking regulations and certainly areas that are adjacent to businesses and schools in terms of how people do take advantage of those street, public, parking on public streets during the day or, you know, at certain times. And clearly, I think with, with this particular neighborhood, the impact was usually between 7:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon, or maybe earlier, 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, and that's when the biggest impact was. The other part is just general behavior of, if it was students parking there, how were they behaving as they, hopefully, they're getting, you know, they're learning something about that as well. But, you know, I've, I've lived in different communities where, where there were permits, and it wasn't, you know, it wasn't that much of a problem. We didn't, the city that, or town that I lived in didn't charge $50 for a permit. It was more like $5 for sticker that you put on your car. You know, the issue about signage, I think there's solutions to that, too. You could have signs at the entrance to the neighborhood, you know.
Not legally.
I think there's different solutions, okay? I'm sure there's a response to anything that I might say. So, anyway, I think we got to look at, we have to look at overall how we might do this, and every neighborhood's different, so.
That's the one thing we learned the most, I think, was that everyone has a different problem and perception of a different problem. And even, even in this one, you know, the kind of the side conversations where, you know, it's really about student parking, student behavior, but other people would say, you know, I don't want to give a student a civics lesson that if he parks in front of my house, I want him out. That, you know, the government is going to come in and move you along, that, you know, it seemed kind of old-school and.
Well, so once you, you know, once we decide on a policy and regulations, then I think, then the next thing is enforcement, because if we have that, if we do have policies and then don't enforce them, then that's, that's another issue as well. So, you know, there are neighborhoods where we've had to do some pretty consistent enforcement, where we do have some stricter regulations over in Summit Hall. So, you know, I don't know if that's called for here, or if that, that kind of pattern and policy should be, should be put in place throughout the city. And certainly, if we look at HOA neighborhoods or townhouse neighborhoods, the parking is completely different, and it's controlled, it's not necessarily controlled by us, but there isn't as much on-street parking in those neighborhoods as well.
And I think some of the HOAs, and some, actually, some HOAs that aren't even within the city, you know, they, they do it a little differently, maybe better, maybe worse, but during this Phase Two study, I think we should also look into our definition of commercial vehicles, because it's very broad. The five-foot, I mean, five feet is not very far from the, you know, that maybe in residential neighborhoods, that needs to be longer, things like that, that might just kind of address the problem another way.
You know, but then the parking of commercial vehicles, you know, if we go along Rabbit Road and other, in that neighborhood, I think that's, that's, that could be a serious problem, too. And it's clear that not everybody that parks there lives, you know, a short walk away.
It's interesting, and not relative to this, but when we surveyed Victory Farm three or four weeks, maybe a month, something like that, we did, we did run plates, and lots of cabs, lots of commercial vehicles, but virtually all city resident, not Sabrook, but other, other neighborhoods, people clearly leaving their commercial vehicles there and walking, you know, a mile, three-quarters of a mile, pretty common.
Henry, did you have something to add?
I was just going to say, you know, the things that I had brought up was, the most important one is to identify the problem, and talked about now citywide as opposed to specific neighborhood, is to identify what the problem is. And if the problem's students, then you put a time limit so that the weekends are free and things like that, and holidays and so forth. If it's something else, then you, you address the signage to that particular problem and not just have a general statement, because, you know, most of the time, it's a daytime problem. Now, you know, in some areas, I'm sure they have other problems, you know, the people who live next to nightlife in, you know, in downtown, you know, areas, and some of their town centers, I'm sure that we're going to have some problems, you know, down the road as they get busier and busier. And so, you know, we make sure that we go after the problem and, and address it correctly so that we don't make a general statement.
They're all agreed, they're all different, and especially the seasoned neighborhoods, a little bit older, you know, they're used to parking directly. But if I knew, you know, anyone who lived on Main Street, you know, staking claim to that Main Street space in front of their house just isn't going to happen, so. Different, different techniques, different areas.
So, coming back to that, it's actually the, kind of the point that I was trying to get to with my comment, which wasn't intended to really be focused on this specific neighborhood, but with your, your concept of going out and surveying other neighborhoods, because we kind of have a patchwork of permit programs, I think there, there's not going to be, it's unlikely, because of what you just said, that there'll be a one-size-fits-all program. It's almost, strikes me as being like the way we do zoning, where there's going to be zones with specific types of issues, where you might have a program that fits that area that wouldn't fit another area that's more of a town center or something along those lines. So how you go about determining what's right for which area is going to be an interesting challenge.
Exactly. And we have six, eight, maybe 10 different programs right now. So what I'm hearing from the police and from neighborhood services is that if we could narrow it down even a little bit. And in fact, no one department is in charge of this. No one tracks it, no one knows who is in possession of permits. In other areas, DC, for example, you know, a permit is attached to a specific car, and you pay for it, and you know whose it is. I'm pretty sure we don't want to go that route, but there's some structure there. There's a department in charge of that. We don't have that, we might have to create that, hence, you know, maybe a small charge to help offset that expense.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, economic development update from Tom Lawton.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'll keep my comments brief. Last Thursday, Sharon and I had the pleasure of traveling to Annapolis for the MEDA, Maryland Economic Development Association, Winter Conference. We go annually, it's always a nice opportunity for us to network, but in particular this year, having our governor-elect as the keynote speaker over lunch was particularly nice, where we heard about all the great things about Maryland, but also the great budgetary challenges that the state is facing, and short on detail at the time, but I'm sure we'll have more in the coming days. But particularly exciting for us was the introduction of the new Secretary of DABAD, the Department of Economic and Business Development. Michael Gill is his name. He was unknown to virtually all of us. He comes from the private sector. He's not a bureaucrat, he is now, I guess, but he spent his entire career. Currently, he's with Evergreen Advisors, a Columbia-based investment banking firm, but he spent several decades before that in the cellular phone industry and electronics manufacturing and all sorts of stuff. So he spent some time speaking to the group as a whole, then after the session ended, spending time just with a handful of directors, including myself, and we got to know him a little bit better. Very personable, very passionate about Maryland a lot longer. And I don't know, I think he's just learning his way around the halls as we speak, but good guy, good personality, and we have the opportunity to introduce all of you to him as well. We'll keep you posted. And secondly, and finally, as you know, we did have to postpone, not cancel, our Economic Business Development Committee breakfast that we held annually. Congressman John Delaney was unexpectedly called actually out of the country beginning this week, so we were on the phone with his office today, and we will be rescheduling for early spring. We'll keep you posted. Thanks.
Thank you.
It was nice to see the congressman at the MML opening reception, actually. We know he's interested.
So next, we have, from the city attorney.
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Anything from any other staff? Not hearing anything. As I mentioned, we have next Monday, our work session on those, the two items, quarter development and zone, and the 355 capital improvement options. Next, regular mayor and city council meeting is Monday, February 2nd. And until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.